And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting of August 19th. And I think we've got some seats up front. Don't be shy. Come on up. It's good to see such a crowd here. We don't always get a lot of attendance, so it's really good to see you all here. We're gonna -- council is present and accounted for. I almost forgot to let you know. I was gonna say Scarlett, but April. We're all here. The order we're gonna go in, I'm gonna ask council if we could change a few things. Of course, first, under, we'll go into items from council, which I'd like to go into right now. And if council doesn't mind, let me go first. We will have citizens' communication following items from council, and that's the point when anyone can come up to the microphone and speak and give your name and address for the record. That's real important that we have that. And we will limit discussion to a few minutes. I will put a clock up there, five minutes, out of consideration for everyone else who wants to speak. Also, and right after citizens' communication, I'd like to move item E4, which is the hot funds allocation. Counsel, I know you're familiar with that, and that's, I know there's a predominant amount of the people here are interested in that item. And rather than make you guys wait for two hours, we can handle that piece of business up front in the agenda. And also, after that, there are a couple of items, counsel, in the work session. The manager reports that I'd like to move up after E4, which is the zoo and Main Street discussions. And you let them know that?
Yeah.
City manager? Okay. Okay, very good. Now, while I'm, since I'm still talking, I do wanna, I got a couple of items not related to hot funds. And if I may go first, I'll go straight into those again. Streetlights, we've had, I've had a number of discussions, complaints, concerns about the number of streetlights out in the city in various places, specifically out by the cat plant. I know there's some there. So if we could look into that, Charmel?
Sure, we'd like to.
And if there's anything that we need to do. Now, as I understand it, AEP are responsible for the streetlights?
Except for on the loop.
Except for out on the loop? Those are ours?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we've had problems on the loop, but they, those have been, Lynn may wanna update. A lot of those have been resolved recently.
Yes, most of the, most of the street lighting in town is taken care of by the electrical providers, either AEP or Victoria Electric Co-op. The ones on the loop that we're talking about are maintained by the city, and we had a lot of those out. And we've recently gone through and got most of those operational. I think we're down to less than 10 that are not operating, and we're continuing to work on those this week. Now, the ones on Lone Tree Road that you're talking about are, by the cat plant, are out, but they're turned, they're actually turned off right now by Victoria Electric Co-op because of the work that's ongoing at the Emerging Technology Center. And once that work's going on, done, they will re-energize those, those streetlights on Lone Tree.
Okay.
They have been reported to VEC.
Okay, I was not aware it was related to that, so that explains a lot. Thank you. Now, and again, we don't mind citizens calling us and reporting streetlights. We just turn around and report that to either AEP or whoever's responsible. The citizen can certainly call them directly, but, okay.
Mayor, but, I mean, I've seen, like, on Red River, for example, between Ben Jordan and Laurent, a number of lights out there. I think also some of the trees are hanging below the lights and are covering the ability for the light to shine on the street. So I don't know, that's an AEP issue for tree maintenance?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll poll them and let them know, so. And just for the polit benefit, if you have a number that's on that poll, that's always helpful to AEP, 'cause there is a number on the poll.
It's a small tag, I think?
Well, it's letters. It's kinda, you can see it, silver, silver letters, numbers, so that's always helpful to us.
That way you could be sure they got the right poll. Those numbers are on all the polls.
Yeah, it's helpful.
If a citizen has a concern about a given poll, they can get the number off of it, and it automatically identifies it when they enter it into the system.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you. And one other thing, sidewalks. I would like to ask city manager if we could perhaps, there's a lot of new apartment complexes being built. And of course, I'm making assumption that the residents of those apartment complexes tend to walk a little more frequent. If we couldn't maybe look at the vicinity of each apartment complex and see if there's any sidewalks that we could step in and fill any gaps. Some areas are, obviously, both sidewalks are built, when someone builds a new business or development, they are, they're required to put that sidewalk out there. Some areas are actually our property, whether there's a drainage ditch or a pumping station, if we need to fill in any of those spots. And what brought this to mind is the new complex off the loop down from Olive Garden.
Ascension.
Ascension. We've got a few spots that are ours down there that we probably could fill in, because I feel like a lot of the folks living in that complex may walk towards the mall. So if we could maybe just get a little inventory, and if there's some funding available, I know there's probably none right now. We don't have anything in our budget allocated, but perhaps if some becomes available.
Sure, we'd like to.
Now, counsel, I have some comments about the hot funds, et cetera. I don't wanna deliberate E4 now, I wanna wait till we get to E4, but I wanna stop for a moment and see what items you guys have.
I just wanna pull D3, D4, and D7.
That's 3, 4, and 7, under section D?
Yes.
3, 4, and 7. Thank you.
From the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda, yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't see, is Mr. Van Gundy here?
He is, he's kinda back.
I had a question. I mean, we're gonna talk about hot funds, and this doesn't relate to this year, but it relates to the ballfields.
Yes, sir.
And what's the progress on that with use of the hot fund money? And the tournaments, any scheduled, any in the foreseeable future?
First, on the renovation of the ballfields, we did push that back because of entering the water restrictions. We are looking for that to start the mid-part of September and go into October to lay the grass, to get it planted, ready to go for spring. So that's kinda where we're at. We're there. The pitching mounds that are already, we're, we're in possession of those right now, so they're already in. Tournaments-wise, we're excited. This past week, we just made a partnership with South Texas U-Tripl-S-A. We received five tournaments for the fall, one of those being an NIT, which is a national invitational tournament. That'll be Boot Fest weekend, and we'll be using the skinned infield, which was the girls' fast pitch fields, along with the adult complex. And so that'll be Boot Fest weekend. We're also in talks right now at a possible girls' fast pitch state tournament. I don't have the exact details of that yet, but we're in contention for that one as well. So we do have five that are on the books for this fall.
Certainly the goal, so happy to hear that.
Yep.
Counsel, do you have anything else?
May I?
Please do, city manager.
Signal at Mockingbird and Carriage, it's on flash right now. Okay.
Yes, that's correct. The signal on Mockingbird, right there at the entrance to East High School, is operational. It's in flash mode now. We plan to put it into full operation near to the end of this week, so that it will be in operation when school starts next week. And then, final completion, you know, there's still some handicap ramps and different cleanup and that sort of thing that'll be ongoing into September, and the project should be totally complete sometime in September.
Thank you.
School starts Monday, doesn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you for, it's good, good timing to update everybody on that. If no one else has anything, and interrupt me if you do, but I just wanted to make some generalized comments about hot funds, since we have such a good audience here. And hot funds being, of course, hotel motel tax, that's our acronym. And I have a few numbers and things, and Gilbert, don't hesitate, I'm looking at you. Don't hesitate to interrupt me if I get anything wrong, but everything I'm gonna say is basically an approximation, so. But, you know, when, just a few short years ago, 10 years ago, the scene was drastically different with hot monies that we collected. We collect, actually, there's 13% on each hotel bill, a 13% charge, and the city gets 7%, and the state gets 6% of that. That's the source of that money. So, you know, no local people pay that tax. It's the visitors who come here that actually pay that tax, and of course, we collect it from the hotels. The idea is it's to promote tourism, which is, you know, attract people to come here from other places and spend the night, heads in beds. And I know a lot of you have heard that term. We can't use the money for streets or anything like that, and I think that's pretty much been driven home, you guys would agree. But, you know, not very long ago, the CBB, that was funded, the Convention and Visitor Bureau, was funded a lot less. I remember those days. That was maybe a decade ago, and a lot of that money ended up going to capital projects for the community center, which was allowable, large things like air conditioner replacement. I think we did a roof one year, and a lot of that money helped with that, to maintain that facility. Now, sometime, and it was 2010 or 11, we created a committee to run that money through, to ask the committee to make recommendations. We formalized the process for giving out these grants. Is that the proper term to use, hot fund grant? You would say?
Yes.
Okay. Because initially, when we started doing it, it was very difficult for the seven of us, and I don't speak for y'all, but I remember when I was on council, it was very difficult to try to make decisions when everybody in the world was calling you, asking, "I need this, I need this." So the committee was formed, and I think they first went through it in about 11, 2011. They make a recommendation to council, and it's a recommendation only, but it's one we do take seriously. It's the, the final decision, responsibility is this group up here. I'll make that real clear, and I do think y'all would agree with me on that. So this year, we budgeted, we're expecting for this upcoming year about 1.7 to 1.8 million. We expect to get that money in. That's a budget. It could not happen, but Gilbert's pretty darn good at budgeting numbers, so we expect about that much. 750 goes to CBB, 750,000. And then there's 5 to 550 for parks projects and some of the athletic projects that you could just ask Colby about. And that left 400 that we allocated to the committee, 400,000. And one of the common questions I get is how much was that compared to last year? So last year was about 560,000. It was more available last year, and that's due to a lot of factors. Collections come and go. So, you know, next year it could be more, next, not next year, but the year after, it could be more, it could be less. So we're, we're subject to the market, and how many tourists we get here, and all that. So I think everyone understands that. I wanted to go through that for the benefit of the group here. Now, counsel, anything else to add? Okay, so what we'll do then, if not, is we'll go ahead, and we'll go into citizens' communication. And again, we'll limit your comments to five minutes. You put the clock up on the screen there, gives you a name and address, and talk about anything you want. A lot of you are here, if you wanna discuss the hot money allocation, that's fine. If there's other issues, come on up. This is the time.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Brazil, and I'm a volunteer for Warriors Weekend. We're a nonprofit housed right here in Victoria. We began eight years ago with just a group of 54 wounded veterans that we brought to town. In this last year, we brought 850 wounded veterans plus caretakers, up to about 1,100 people we brought from forts and hospitals across the nation. These are all veterans who've been wounded in the Iraq and Afghanistan war. I'm sure all of you have heard about it, because it's, we're the largest event of its kind in the nation. So we've really put a big stamp on Victoria, and tonight I'm here to ask about hot funds, because when it comes to hot funds, we got a big zero. And I don't understand that at all. And what I've done was, is I've brought some statistics that I'd like to pass, if, I don't know if this is the proper time, statistics to pass to you. And what it shows on this is, first of all, is that according to your description on the website, is that the municipal hotel occupancy tax may be used only to promote tourism, convention, and the hotel industry. So I'd like to talk about why, on three areas, does Warriors Weekend make an amazing impact? By the way, Warriors Weekend, not only does the three-day event, but we also do the Field of Honor, which is up for 30 days. We do a barbecue cook-off. We have a muster at the convention center. We've done several parades. So we're very involved in Victoria and promoting Victoria, along with, obviously, what our passion is, is helping wounded veterans. So in the area of promoting business, which I know is, is very important, I have brought with me tonight a packet that I would also like to leave with you. These are the bills, including hotel bills, of over $225,000 that we spent just this last go-round in, in the city. Of that, $17,049.25 were spent at the, at five hotels in Victoria. Even though the fishing event occurs in Port O'Connor, Port O'Connor is itty-bitty, as well as sea drift. And when you're talking 1,100 veterans, plus 950 boat captains and assistants, plus volunteers and sponsors, we're talking thousands of people we bring here. And we can't possibly put them in the number of hotels that's there. So we provide buses and bring them back to Victoria. So this is one area where, indeed, the hotel occupancy tax, but also the tourism aspect, because all of the 1,100 people, we are bringing from areas, 16 bases and hospitals outside of Victoria. Now, some indeed are from Fort Hood, but the majority are from Fort Drum in New York, Fort Bliss, Fort Campbell, Washington State, Pendleton in California. So we cover that gamut, okay? Another thing, exposing Victoria to thousands of potential residents. Over and over, we hear from these veterans of how much they love how we roll our heart out and the generosity of the Texas people, and how they are amazed and want to relocate here. We even held a job fair for local companies at our last one to try to help veterans. The convention center, we use it for our barbecue. We had three years in a row, rent the convention center, and we had 82 barbecue teams, which is over 350 people, who came in from all over, including outside of the state. Also, we were, in, rent the convention center for our muster, 1,200 people, where we rent the whole place. We also spend thousands of dollars in Victoria. And I know it's not all about hotel, but it's also about bringing business and tourism and people here, where we spend our money here in Victoria. We pay the hotel and the sales tax. You know, some nonprofits don't do that. We always pay every bit of our tax as we go along our way. So my question to you is that if we indeed meet this criteria, why are we shut out after last year you allocated $10,000 to us? It doesn't make any sense. We constantly grow, we constantly do the same things, so we have obviously met the criteria in the past. Why not now? My time's up. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a factual question?
Sure. The item's on the agenda, so go ahead.
Okay, yeah. No, I wanted to ask, so were you asking for the same amount as was given last year, or what is the amount you're seeking?
Actually, we had asked for more this year. The actual fact was, is that we spent $17,049.55. We had asked for 20,000. By the way, I'd like to leave this with you, because these are copies of the actual hotel bills and, and our bills within the city. So I thought that would be of interest to you to prove the fact that we had heads in beds. We actually had more than what you see, because this is what we pay for the veterans and the caretakers. In addition to that, we also put on our website a spot where you can hit for lodging, and we list Victoria hotels that work with us. And so we know that boat captains and their assistants and out-of-state people came and used that, but I can't produce their bills. So I do know that it was more than this.
Thank you. Okay, citizens' communication's open. Come on forward.
Hi, my name is Megan Booth. My address is 611 Sherwood Drive. I'm one of the promoters of Victoria Comic-Con, and everybody that's here, well, most of them, a lot of them are for us. Let me just start off by saying that our event brought in over 3,000 people this last year on our very first year. This was just me and Brian, this is my fiancee. I'm 21, he's 25, and we did all of the advertising by ourselves. We paid for this show a little bit from sponsors, but most of it came from us. We believe in this event so much that we were willing to put everything possible into our first year, and look how great it did. And it's only growing, and that's why I am just, I really hope that you guys can come out to our show in 2015, January, it's 17th and 18th. We're a two-day show now, which means more hotel stays. We have actually a discounted rate for buying a ticket for both days to, you know, generate hotel stays. That's going to encourage people to buy the two-day pass to stay in our hotels, and just in vendors alone, we have over 50 hotels, two nights, not just one, that's two nights. And I can't even, I can't even give you a number of how many people are gonna have hotels. It's going to be a lot. The city's going to be packed. And so I just, I really hope the committee can see, you know, come out in 2015, January, and just see the event, just see it, see how great it is, see what a positive event it is for the youth, for us. We have not, we don't have a lot going on here. As far as not-drinking events, what is there to do? Not much. We're that. We're, that's exactly what we're doing. Come out. We're, this is clean, family fun. This is something for everybody. This is no alcohol. There's no angry, no mean people, no pushing, no lines. Well, there are lines, but it's fun. Everybody wants to get their signature, their autographs, their pictures, pictures with this person there. It's, it is the best event. This is the, one of the best things going on in Victoria right now, and I really hope you guys can come out in January and just see it.
My name is Brian Hans. My address is also 611 Sherwood Drive. I just wanted to add a couple more things. Our main goal is to promote Victoria, as well as bring a fun event, but we actually have a link straight to the convention and visitors bureau on our website, as well as a few other historical places in Victoria, just to promote tourism here. So people aren't just coming just for our event, they can see everything that's going on in Victoria. So that was one other thing I just wanted to add.
Okay, citizens' communication is still open. I don't wanna cut anyone off. Okay, seeing no one, we'll, we'll close citizens' communications. Well, I do wanna, let me backtrack one second. Mr. Padone, you here? Did I see you walk in? Can I put you on the spot?
What else is there? (laughing).
Under citizens', since, let's stay in citizens' communications for a moment more. You and I had a conversation this morning, and would you like to speak to that, or would you just like me to address it?
Go ahead.
Okay, so we're gonna close citizens' communication, and we'll move into item E4, and I'll discuss what we discussed.
Item E4 is a resolution allocating funding to outside agencies from the 2014-2015 Hotel Occupancy Tax Funds, authorizing the city manager to execute funding agreements with said agencies, and declaring an effective date.
Let's start with a motion.
Motion we adopt E4.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt E4 as it's presented. I have some comments, and I'm sure y'all, some of y'all may be curious as to why I asked Mr. Padone if he wanted to speak. Let me give you all that information, and then, if that's okay with counsel. Of course, as you know, in our packet under item E4, you can see that, where is Mr. Padone's? Which one is it?
Performing Arts Center. Film Festival is actually presented by the Victoria Performing Arts Center, so that's.
I meant to mark that. Anyway, Mr. Padone was allocated $45,000 out of the budgeted amount for next year, and he contacted me this morning and asked if we would consider reducing his amount by $10,000 and allocating that to the Comic-Con group. I personally thought that was a very generous thing for him to do. I understand the idea of the committee making that recommendation, but to this, to, there appears, and I don't speak for Anthony, he's sitting right over there, and he, he didn't wanna come up and speak, but it appears to me that there would be a lot of mutual benefit between the two, and I could see some of his logic in wanting to do that. Anthony shared with me his discussions with the organizers of Comic-Con, how impressed he was with them, and what he thought that this would be such a good event. I was not able to attend Comic-Con last year, but perhaps this year I will, I'll try. I do not have the impression that Mr. Padone is saying he doesn't need the money. It's not about that. He has such a strong desire to see them succeed, and I have a feeling that if we were able to do this, if council agreed to that, which that's all an individual decision, you know, they would benefit even more, and there may be some mutual benefit between the two groups. So I, I do not have a problem with that. What that would require is an amendment from someone to reduce Mr. Padone's allocation and then add it to the Comic-Con group. Now, there's other groups that did not give funding, specifically Warriors Weekend. I, I have no response to that at this point. So with that said, what are your thoughts on any of it?
First of all, all the agencies that were funded last year that are asking for money for this next budget year, they have complied and have been reimbursed their funds?
I would say that they have, I don't wanna say all of them have. There are several agencies who have not yet submitted their post-event report. Remember, after the event happens, they submit a report back to us explaining how they spent the money and submitting all of their receipts, and then that report is reviewed, the receipts are reviewed by finance before the funding is distributed. There are several agencies who are still in that category, but we do anticipate them all receiving their funding.
In other words, they'll all be complying with last year's funding?
We anticipate this. We assume that, yes.
Right, okay. Well, the, the other thing I was gonna suggest to council, maybe instead of moving monies around, why don't we just increase the budget from 400 to 410, 415, whatever y'all wanna maybe consider funding these two entities, so we could just boost it by that amount as another alternative.
That's always an option. I mean, I, I know, my opinion only, I mean, we need to try to, at the same time, we need to respect the community's recommendation. So that's something we all have to balance. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
My, my comments would be, I, I would be concerned about the Warriors Weekend. I, I think it's one of the most profound things we do as a community. I really do think it's, I really do think it does get us national recognition, and I think it's just such a remarkable and wonderful thing for those who have been injured in their service to our country. If we do anything here, and I'm not saying I'm against dealing with the Comic-Con and addressing that, but if we do anything here, I think we've got to restore some of this funding to Warriors Weekend.
I agree.
That's my thoughts.
I agree.
And I think if we're gonna change something, we might as well change both of them together. I mean, we're gonna amend this, and I do respect the recommendations from the committee, but like we said, we are the ones that decide finally. And I think, I agree that, I think Warriors Weekend should get something, you know.
Yes.
Mr. Gush, you were, you said on the committee. Were all the applications put in on time and complete?
No. There were three different entities who turned in their applications on time but not complete. I asked each of those entities in a follow-up letter to submit the documents that were missing, and two of those entities did follow up with the remainder of the documents. The one that did not was Comic-Con.
Is there a specific reason? Did they give you?
In the, in his response email back to me, Mr., and I've forgotten his last name, I'm sorry. Hans, thank you, responded that there were some of the documents he felt he didn't need to supply, and he was right about that, because they have not done events supported by hot funds in the past, and that he didn't feel the need to submit the remainder of the documents. He felt we had everything that we needed to make our decision. The committee disagreed. The committee felt that without a budget projecting how he was gonna spend the money in the upcoming year, it was impossible for them to know whether the money was going to be used appropriately.
So we would need, it was the budget?
That's the document that we definitely need.
And that's one of the things I failed to mention. If, if an amendment is made, which I suspect there will be one, whatever it looks like, if Comic-Con is included, it needs to be contingent upon them submitting a budget for next year, which is a simple document. It's not, shouldn't be too burdensome on them, because we need that budget for you to create a contract for them.
Right.
Okay, okay. And the same with any other entity. And of course, you know, all this is contingent upon a budgeted number. As I said, if the money doesn't come in, no one gets it. It's, everyone is de-allocated proportionally, and I think everyone understands that.
And if I can also add, that of course, that would be contingent upon the budget meeting the, the legal requirements.
Yes.
The.
The expenditures and. Yes, the expenditures and, and I would say that the, uh,
I'm not, I mean, I was just going to speak, so we're possibly going to give money without knowing their budget?
Contingent upon.
Okay, contingent upon.
Them completing what they need to complete.
So, so if they don't agree to the contingency, there just won't be money provided?
Right. I don't, and with respect to the committee, they did a tremendous amount of work. They vetted this process, and that's reflected in this allocation. You know, if this group, the seven of us, we could have spent two days doing this. So I, I think that, to the committee, I don't know if any of them are here, I have a big thank you and a lot of respect, excuse me, for them in doing that process. You know, any minor changes we get, I don't want them to have the impression that we do not appreciate or respect the work they've done.
Mr. Mayor, that's kind of my, my feeling, that they did allocate the monies we gave them, the 400,000, and without stirring that and starting to move monies around, I still think it's, it's prudent that we would consider, you know, an additional funding amount. Pick the number you want to give to each of these two entities, and amend the budget from 400 to that additional amount, and we're done. My opinion.
I don't agree with that as much. I like that we set a budget and we stick by that 400, and we find a way to agree in that 400 on funding these other two. And my proposal on it was I'd take 5,000 from the Leo J. Welder Center and move it to Warriors Weekend, and the 10,000 from Performing Arts Center to Comic-Con, based on them completing their application process.
You make that in the form of a motion?
So do you?
I want to make them in two separate motions.
Okay.
Can I ask something first, Mr. Bucknig? So you believe Warriors Weekend should get funded one quarter of their requested, but Comic-Con should get 100% of their, of their requested?
Before, if I can interject something here, there is a mistake on the document that I think both of you are looking at. Y'all are looking at the CM1, which was prepared by my office, and I apologize for this mistake. There are two mistakes on that chart. One mistake is that it says that Warriors Weekend received $5,000 last year, that is not correct. They had two separate applications last year, and each of them was 5,000, so it was a total of 10,000 last year. And I wanted to interject that in case you were arriving at your $5,000 based on what they arrived, were given last year. The other mistake is less material to this conversation, it's that there's a blank next to Victoria Art League, and they received 12,000 last year.
I just wanted to make a comment, and I know this is not what Mr. Bucknig meant at all, I understand that. But I, I just, as much as I appreciate Comic-Con, my son and his friends drug me and my, my family out to Comic-Con, and they had a great time, so I'm, I'm a supporter, I, I appreciate the good work. And, but as much as I do, I do not put it on the same level as what I put what we're doing on behalf of those who've lost their limbs, their eyesight, their arms, on behalf of their country. And that's no disrespectful to Comic-Con, but it's, it's really more to say how much I think we owe those who've done that on be, our behalf of our country. And I, I don't think we ought to weigh them the same, at the same level. And I think that if we're going to weigh one heavier, more heavily than the other, I think we need to do right by those who've, who are not intact while we still are, because of what they've done for our country.
I don't really think anyone would disagree.
Oh, and I don't, I know they wouldn't, I, I totally understand that.
So, okay, good discussion, we can continue, I'm just, Mr. Bucknig, do you want to, you want to break into two?
I think breaking into two would be easier to get amendments approved.
Okay. You want to go ahead?
I'll make one motion to amend the budget numbers to move, to put Victoria Performing Arts Center at $35,000 and Victoria Comic-Con at $10,000.
Give me those numbers again, Performing Arts Center at?
35,000.
35.
Comic-Con at 10,000.
Comic-Con at 10.
Now, before,
That's a motion. Okay.
To keep, if you don't mind.
That's as a single motion, as opposed to putting another piece in that, is why?
One right now, I want to deal with them separately.
As opposed to including Warriors Weekend.
Before I ask for a second, because it's related, what do you intend your second one to be? Would you state that, is that okay? What would your second motion be?
I don't have it fully formed.
You don't have it? Okay, okay. Well, they're kind of related. Okay, let's get a second, anybody want a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a second for that, and that is, again, to remove, to reduce the Victoria Performing Arts Center by $10,000 and move that to the Victoria Comic-Con, increase them from 0 to 10,000. Now, that's one specific item to vote on, but back to Warriors Weekend. Got anything, what are you, what are y'all's thoughts?
I'd like to.
Because they're related.
The only issue, David, the, I'm sorry, Mr. Hagan. I'm not saying that because the dollar amount is different that I was proposing, that there's any different weight that I'm doing towards Warriors Weekend or Comic-Con.
I understand.
I came up with the 5,000 because that's what was on the sheet here, and that's 2013 funding. I'm trying to find another 5,000, I'm already here, but, as far as getting something off the ground and rolling, I think that Warriors Weekend's going to have a much better chance nationally raising funds. I'm glad that we can able, able to help contribute to it, ensure our appreciation, but also that, I think, that's why I was going with 10.
And I, and I absolutely respect your thoughts, but at the same time, I'd like to at least get us,
Well, help me find another, help me find another five in here.
I mean, the other five, at least match them from last year if we can.
What about Victoria Bach? They got 43,000 last year, and we're giving them 45 this year, why can't we take five from there?
Make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a motion on the floor, we need to resolve that before we get another motion.
Okay, we can't have two, I thought we could. Break your Robert rules out?
Jeff can.
Do it one at a time.
Okay, we'll do them one at a time, that's, that's fine.
My concern with this is, I know that the money is the same, and I appreciate the, I appreciate the offer from Mr. Padone, but now he all of a sudden, because of his offer, is he taking over the role of the Hot Funds Committee? And is he, no, I'm, no, Mr., I mean, but from the initial thing, and the amendment was made. But that's my, certainly my concern.
We're not reducing his.
No, no, no. For the first one, we are.
We haven't, we haven't done that.
Amendment, I'm sorry.
Right now, the Film Festival's still at its allocated amount.
I thought that's what this amendment did.
Didn't you say from?
No, the motion on the floor was to reduce the Victoria Performing Arts Center,
Oh, forgive me.
which is the Film Festival.
We got to label these different, I apologize.
That's my concern, is this a slippery slope that we're going down? And, Mr. Bucknig, you made the, the amendment, so it's yours, you own it. However, I, I do have some concerns in that regard.
Point of order, if he's made a motion, shouldn't we deal with that, whether he could get a second and carry from there?
We do have a second on the motion.
We have a second.
I will second that motion.
We already have.
We already have a second.
That, that's an amendment.
Yes.
Right.
Well, it's, um, it, it's a, you know, there's no way around this. Some people are going to be upset, and some people are going to be happy. It, and I got to tell you, this process was miserable seven, eight years ago, okay? You've heard me complain, so we're resolving a lot in one small span of time.
It's like a cakewalk compared to what it used to be.
Yeah, you're right, you were here, and this, this change is fairly immaterial to the overall amount. Think of it that way. I don't see it as Mr. Padone controlling anything, because we can certainly not do that. I see it as a very generous offer from someone who is willing to make up those funds elsewhere in his event to see this event succeed. And I, I just have no problem with that, I, I just don't, I think the committee, if we gave the committee 410,000, maybe they would have given the 10 to the Comic-Con, I don't know, but. Y'all have further thoughts on the amendment?
I just want to make sure I stated it correctly, do you want to read it back, or do you want me to restate it?
That is an amendment, let me read it back to make sure that I understood what you said, and you double-check what I repeat back to you. That is an amendment to reduce Victoria Performing Arts Center's allocation from 45 to 35, and for clarity, that's the Film Festival. And move that money to Victoria Comic-Con to change theirs from 0 to 10,000.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon them submitting a budget for the upcoming event. That meets the approval of the legal department.
Mr. Mayor?
Very good.
I'm not going to support that. I still think the easier solution is to add some additional funds. The committee did work to allocate the 400,000. We're left with trying to fill some voids here, and to start shifting around money from one, I think we are going against the charge we gave the committee and all the work that they did. I appreciate Mr. Padone's willingness to presume that he was going to get that $45,000, which, you know, depending on the vote, but again, I would, I would rather stay whole with the, the hotel committee's recommendation, and as fine resources, and budget additional funds if we're going to, so be inclined to, to spend. But that's going to be my vote against it.
And, and we can have other amendments. Let's see where this goes, everybody vote on this, I'm going to call for the vote, and then you can certainly make an additional amendment and so forth. So all those in favor for the amending motion, say aye?
Aye.
Raise your hand, please.
Just the ayes raising hands?
Raise your ayes, raise your hand, okay, I want to make sure we have four, okay. Any of those opposed, raise your hand? Okay, that's fine. So that item, that amendment passes, all right. Now, more amendments.
I'd like to amend, to add $5,000 to the Warriors Weekend, and you asked, Mr. Bucknig had asked me how we could do it. I'm game, I'm really, it's irrelevant to me where it comes from, but I'll suggest something. We could take $1,000 from all the most, the most highly-funded items on here, $1,000 from the J., the Leo J. Welder Center, $1,000 from Theater Victoria, $1,000 from Victoria Ballet, $1,000 from the Victoria Performing Arts Theater. This is one, two, three, four, five, I think that's, was that five? Anyway, that's, that's my suggestion, what we do, just go down the list and take, and divvy it up the, the pain that way, or we can increase the, the amount of funding that we take out of the, the overall balance, as Mr. Alvarez suggested. But I think we need to get to that 10,000 that they had last year.
Are you going to make a motion to that?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, do, can you restate the five, I'll give you a second to mark along.
Before I make the motion, if anybody has any other suggestions about how we did, I'm not, I'm throwing out something. I don't feel overly passionate about who we take this from.
Before you restate your motion, Mr. Hagan, at one point I heard you say 5,000, at another time I heard you say 10.
No, I mean, I want the total to be, to match last year, the 10,000, so I want to add an additional 5,000 by subtracting some. And, you know, unfortunately, I wish I had a better grasp of how each this, subtracting $1,000 from each of these organizations would impact them, I don't. So I, it's kind of arbitrary as to how I'm going to choose, I'm just choosing it from the largest amount.
Do it as a proportional.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
Got a calculator?
From each one?
From each, except for Mr. Padone, the VPAC.
Because I think you get where I'm going, trying to be able to help Warriors Weekend without unfairly burdening any of these other organizations.
It'd be the other, was it 14, I think?
Right.
Well, 5% of 400,000 is 10,000, right? 5%? No, 20,000, 20. So 20,000, so what'd you say?
But it's, it's. Two and a half percent? But if you don't take it from Mr. Padone, it's not out of 400, it's out of 465, 365.
Well, I would suggest, to make things simple, if we move on, not stay here, to me calculate ratios and everything else, why don't you make your motion excluding those two items that you already took money from or added to? And in any resolution, say you allocated based upon the total percentage allocation, so make it simple, so we can come back. Because I have to come back to you in August and show that amendment to the budget, and I'll show you the format, how that was broken out, just to make it simple and move on.
So, so I, what, what you're saying is, we need to make a motion to proportionally remove from those particular items $5,000, or 10,000, whatever it is, and allocate it to that, that's fine.
And then I come back in August, when I show you a budget amendment, which I won't have to do anyway, I'll show you the allocation, how that came about.
I understand, because 5,000 is already allocated, so it's really just another.
Nothing's allocated.
Well, there's two things, Mr., Mr. Jeff Bucknig was suggesting, take 5,000 already away from Leo Welder. Now, that stands, then you take, so it's not standing, so it's taking the total 10,000 across the board with exclusion of the ones you already have allocated money, and those come out of the picture. Does that make sense to you? So in other words, the Film Festival comes out, the Victoria Comic-Con comes out. Those don't call, those not in play at all.
Just Performing Arts Center, don't get mine, not Comic-Con.
Well, to allocate the other 10,000, I'm saying the new ratio allocation for a total would be based.
I would leave them in there.
You going to take money away from the Comic-Con again?
Take away the money you just gave them, that's what?
Mm-hmm.
All right, as a point of clarification, as a point of clarification, also before the motion gets made, Mr. Raina, when you say proportionally, do you mean in the, in the proportion of the recommended award? Or even proportion across?
What I'm saying is that, right now, yes, you want to say a $400,000, okay? Now, my understanding a while ago, which I just heard Mr. Jeff Bucknig say, Comic-Con is on the table again. Is that correct? Well, I need everybody to tell me that.
What I think, you're saying, what, a proportion of it, is what you're saying.
I said the only, a proportion of it.
So all that comes out is the Film Festival, which is, so everybody else will give up a percentage to make up the total 10?
Yes.
Is that okay with the council?
Well, we don't have a motion yet, hold on, we're, we're just discussing.
I know, that's, that's what my understanding is, right now.
Okay, let me, we're complicating this, okay? Let's make a decision and finish this. I don't really want to come back with number, I don't want to not know the numbers. I don't think it's, now, Warriors Weekend got 5,000 last year.
10.
10 last year, so that's the mistake here that you mentioned, or they got 10,000. And no one wants to just do there arbitrarily, their initial discussion was to remove a certain amount. I will take a recess, if someone wants to work it out, sit down with the, with the pen, work up the numbers, and we can reconvene and have the proper.
Five minutes.
Okay, so, so let's do that. Y'all gather your wits for your motion and your numbers and whatnot. We're going to take a recess of five minutes. Can you put five minutes up on the clock, please? James does that. So we will do that, and then we'll get back together. Whoever's going to do that, go work it out, thank you. Well, if anyone needs a drink or restroom break, now's the time. Make a few comments about the committee, and, Thomas, did you want to do that? Would you like to start off?
I did, I wanted to thank the committee members. I think, counsel, seeing how difficult this issue is to, to resolve, just these three or four changes that you're trying to make tonight, the committee does monumental work on this project, pulling together the applications, reviewing.
Yeah, I was going to grab that.
Yeah. This is the stack of applications that the committee had to go through in order to make their decision. It's a little over 600 pages worth of information that they dug through, and that, that it took a lot of time in a pretty short timeframe for them to turn that around and make significant contributions to the committee, to the committee's work. And what I really want to say in thanking them is that it's impressive to me that you can bring together those seven people from diverse backgrounds, charge them with representing completely different interests, the hoteliers, the sports, the history, and the arts, and then have them sit around at a table and make such constructive decisions. That was very much an example of what you want to see in a deliberative body. They did not always agree, in fact, I think they rarely agreed, but they always worked collectively to come up with a good answer. And I think the, the work that they did was tremendous, and I want to thank each of them for the work they did on that committee.
Thank you, Thomas, I think that reflects the ease of all of us, for sure. And they are a diverse group, I know that, because I talked to some of them, and it was an interesting debate. We do try to, and it's really important to note that, Thomas held up that booklet, as council members, and I don't think any of you did, we don't go through all that in detail, I know I'm pretty busy. So they, when you look, they have to look at the big picture. There is no one entity more important than the other. Every one of these entities is wonderful, and, and I know we all believe that. So they have to look at it as a group and make that tough decision, and they do the best they can. So, okay, are you guys ready? Do you have some? Okay, you want to just read off your motion?
Sure, I want to make a, a motion to amend the dollar amounts as presented in E4. And I'll start at the top, let's see, Leo J. Welder Center, $24,801. Minority Business Council, $7,781. Museum of the Coastal Bend, $29,100. Museum of the Coastal Bend, $29,178. Quilt Guild of Victoria, $3,890. South Texas Zoological Society, $12,158. Theater Victoria, $58,356. Victoria Art League, $5,836. Victoria Bach Festival.
You need to go confer. Gilbert, can you come up?
Yeah, you missed one. Bach Festival, I hadn't put that one in.
That's it?
I just put it back in.
Yeah, we need to start over. He added one number, one allocation in, so we're going to start back at the top and try again.
That's okay. It's important. This is important.
We'll take our time.
First one, Leo J. Welder Center, $24,878. Minority Business Council, $7,805. Museum of the Coastal Bend, $29,268. Quilt Guild of Victoria, $3,902. South Texas Zoological Society, $12,195. Theater Victoria, $58,537. Victoria Art League, $5,854. Victoria Bach Festival, $43,902.
46?
43.
$43,902 for Victoria Bach Festival. Victoria Ballet Theater, $39,024. Comic-Con, $9,756. Victoria Fine Arts Association, $19,024. VPAC, again, is $35,000, as previously amended. Victoria Preservation Incorporated, $13,659. Victoria Symphony, $39,024. And Warriors Weekend, $10,000.
Is that the complete motion? I'd like to second that motion.
Is there any contractual language, anything contingent upon anything?
No.
Okay. Save that spreadsheet. Okay.
It's on videotape, too.
So we have, so we have a motion and a second. Y'all heard all the adjustments. This is an amending motion, the second one on this item.
Before we have any discussion, the mayor asked me a question while we were on break, and I'd like him to ask that question again publicly about the allocation of the arts.
The allocation of the arts, this changes that mix-up between the 15% for the arts and the historical aspect. Are we still meeting our legal obligations?
Yes, we are. Then the reason we are is, the First Amendment was a straight swap, arts to arts, so it didn't change that allocation. And the Second Amendment that we're discussing right now is reducing all of the arts equivalently at each line in order to put money into sports. So arts is going down to be further below the 15% cap.
Because the Warriors Weekend is counted as a sporting event.
It counts as a sporting event, that's right.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion, questions, council, on this amending motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to make the point, this whole exercise was not necessary because we have a reserve fund balance of over $400,000, that we could have easily tapped for another 10, 15, 20,000, plugged into those two line items, and we would have been done. Yet, we had to go through this whole exercise, and I think it was ridiculous, in my opinion. I'm still going to vote against it.
You could have made a motion.
I attempted to.
Okay, I did not hear a motion from you regarding that. I mean, no disrespect, Mr. Alvarez, but you certainly could have. That fund balance is important. You know, this is all based on budgeted numbers. If things don't come in, and we don't have the money, so we need to have a reserve balance. That's all, not to be argumentative with you. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, those opposed, same sign. Okay, noted. Item passes, E4 passes. Now, not E4, excuse me, the amended E4.
Yes, the Second Amendment to E4.
We have a motion and a second on E4 as amended. Is there any further discussion about it? Y'all talked it out. Okay. All those in favor of E4 as amended, please raise your hand. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. All right. E4 passes. Thanks, everyone, for your good comments and your patience with us.
Thank you, Mr. Padone.
Yes, Mr. Padone, thank you very much. Let's see, let me.
I'd like to clarify, I asked Mr. Polosik during the break about his vote on the amendment.
The First Amendment?
The First Amendment. He did not raise his hand.
And it was a positive vote. I did vote for that amendment.
Thank you.
So that's for the record?
For the record.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarmel. Okay, so we did our, where are we at? Thank y'all. Citizens Communication is done, E4 is done. We need to do the zoo in the Main Street now, and I don't know whatever order they want to go in. Whoever wants to go first? All right. Thank you.
Amanda Roach with the zoo is coming forward. And this is, since we're, have a conversation tonight about budget, we have our first vote on the budget next Thursday, the 28th. Amanda's here to kind of talk about her request of 150,000, and then Mary Helen Barrett from Main Street will do the same thing.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amanda Roach, and I just finished my second year as the executive director at the Texas Zoo. And I have been employed a little over three and a half years. And it has been a whirlwind experience, and every day is a whole new day. But two people I wanted to introduce to y'all today, you don't get to see them too much, but it's my two managers, well, we have four managers at the zoo under me, but these are our two managers. I call them the sides of the coin. So I have Michael McGaw, who's our animal curator. Ha-ha. And then Nathan Palmer, who's our program manager. And an easy way to think about it is, Michael is animals and facilities, and Nathan is people, so it's volunteers, education, PR, whatnot. Oh, this is me. Just some basic statistics about the zoo, basic information we all know pretty much. Nonprofit 501(c)(3), we're located in beautiful Riverside Park. We have six developed acres of property. We've been established, we've been in place for about 57 years, proclaimed the National Zoo of Texas. And we see, this year, our visitation has gone down, about 2,000 people due to our extreme weather conditions. Winter was actually a little cold for us at the zoo, and summer has been extremely warm. It started a little bit earlier than usual. So our numbers have gone down from 65,000 to about 63. And one thing we have seen this year, and last year we saw toward the end of it, is our visitation from out of town. This year, that 63, about 35% actually came from outside of Victoria, which is pretty impressive. I think that means the word's getting out there, people back there doing their job, people are coming to see us. We have 20 employees, two part-time, 18 full-time employees. Our mission statement, it's what we do every day, and every decision we make is, we try to keep this going, and it's just basically connecting people with wildlife from Texas, number one, and of course, the rest of the world, because everything is important. We advance conservation through education, recreation, science, and action. And we do a little bit of this every single day, and it's so much fun. This is the area we serve. Most of our visitors come from a little south of Houston, starting around Katy. We go all the way into San Antonio, all the way down into past Corpus Christi to Kingsville. We even have school groups that are coming out way past Kingsville, like Aladoce, and we had some out of Sugar Land this year, too. And it's mainly because you can get up close at our zoo, and the kids are going to see stuff, it's easy to contain your children, and we offer a lot of really great opportunities for them. This is how our general income is broken down. Admissions, 29%. City of Victoria and their generous funding is 20%. Education, special events are neck and neck, concession stand, pass holders, donations, and animal care. The way animal care makes money, that is through direct donation in this one glass jar, and all our recycling goes to animal care. And then they also do these really fantastic new behind-the-scenes tours and primate encounters. So, the animals are out there making popcorn. This is how we carry out our mission. We're a living museum. We exhibit from every continent in the world except for Antarctica. I keep trying to get penguins, but someone's just like against me. We participate in many species survival plans, and that every zoo in the nation, in the world, are going to be participating in these. So this is, if you're, if you're something, you're doing this. We're not just housing animals just to house them. Most of our animals are rehabbed, or it's because the big animal entities say, hey, we need some, we need this happening, and that's what we do. Many reint introductory programs, Ocelot is the biggest one right now. And we, every day, we have a growing endangered species collection. And one thing that I'm extremely proud of, and we do so well, within the last two weeks, I have visited Houston zoos, Dallas zoos, Fort Worth zoos, Austin zoos, and this is where we excel. It's our education programming, we encourage and promote wildlife conservation and tourism. And I'm just so proud that we do it. And, you know, I used to say, yeah, we totally do it, but no, we really do it. And that's extremely impressive. People know where we are, which is good, because they didn't use to, and they know about Victoria, too. And I feel we definitely have a large part in that as well. This is the way we reach people, through our field trips, outreaches, traveling exhibits, camps, overnights at the zoo, birthday parties, kid programs, volunteer programs, our daily programming, special events, and of course, our partnering. And this is what the zoo looks like anytime between March and May. We have about three to 10 school buses outside of the zoo. It gets a little crazy, but we have a good team, and they make it happen. So far, no one has gotten eaten. Yay. School field trips, we see about 8,000 students a year. That also includes their teachers, and about 60% of those are actually from outside of Victoria. And I know a lot of schools, this is their field trip, they save their money, because, you know, we all know field trips are extremely expensive, and they're coming to our zoo. And the smaller zoos are making it a full day, they'll go to us. Peter Piper Pizza is a really big business, that they're getting a lot of business from our field trips. And then they go to the museums, and they try to make a full day of it. So that's wonderful. We reach a lot of people on these outreaches and our traveling exhibits. This past year, we reached 2.2 million people. That's through the San Antonio Livestock Show, McAllen Earth Day, Corpus Christi Earth Day. This year, we're scheduled, we're adding, we've added those, and we're also going to, it's by Raymondville, Texas, for another outreach. And it's because our, we have an ocelot. We have the only traveling exhibit ocelot in the nation, and that is so amazing. There's another ocelot in Cincinnati that he'll come down for a multimillion-dollar fee, and he'll do a show and a program for you, but then he gets put away. We're very fortunate that we work really hard with our ocelot, one of our male ocelots, and he's on exhibit, and people get to get up close, and then they care. And it's really sad, though, we go to San Antonio, and people are like, look, it's a cheetah. We're like, oh, it's a Texas animal. So, you know, we still have a lot of work to do. But it's, we're very unique, and it's just, of course, I think we're amazing, so it's spectacular. Our other programming, our camps, we have 17 camps throughout the year. This year, they were 90% full, which is great. We have a junior volunteer program, and our volunteer program at the zoo, this year, we had 2,100 hours donated. 100 volunteers were necessary for the color up run this past year, and we got every single one of them, and the team worked so hard to get them, but they did it, and that helps reach that high number for us. Our daily scheduled programming, and we have these fantastic brochures. I don't know if y'all have seen these brochures yet, I brought one for everybody. And thanks to the Visitors Bureau, LaRue and her crew, she really helped us get those out, and they are so stunning, and we're just so proud of them. And now, all of our other publications have to live up to it. We're going to do it. This is what we do every day. You have Keeper Chats, Animals Live, it's an animal program. Gator Feeding, Lion Training, Own Your Fear is a program centered around things that people are scared of, just trying to educate them, so a lot of snakes in that program. Animal Encounters, Zoo's Day, Zoo Squad, that's a new program for us. It's an early elementary school. After school, you come over, you hang out, learn something, it's fantastic. Wildside Tours, Zoo Tours, and the Primate Encounter. The Primate Encounter is new this past year, and we just did a Groupon down in the Corpus Christi area, and we sold 150 of them. And they were for four people. So that is a ton of people from that direction coming. We actually sold one to somebody in Oklahoma who's coming down to do it, because we're the only zoo in this area that is letting you encounter primates, and you'll need to come, you need to come see it, because Michael and his crew do an amazing job. I was like, what's the big deal? And I did it, and I was like, oh. Everyone needs to do it. I shouldn't say that, but it's fantastic. And this is just an example of a primate encounter, right here on the left, that's Whitney, and Bright Eyes, she's so, it's just fantastic, they get to feed it, feel it, just feel their wonderful hands, and it's, it's a really fantastic experience. And then up there, you have Mr. Michael McGaw in the middle of an alligator program and alligator feeding. Special events, we do an event about once every six weeks, and these are just a couple that we did this past year. The picture is of Sea Lion Splash, which is an international traveling exhibit that comes through, and we housed it out in front of the zoo, and we got so many people that came through. They were here for a weekend, and we'll bring them back eventually, but we're going to take a year off for them, since we have seen them twice. And every one of these events are just so spectacular, and they all are mission-aligned, and some of them are actually educational events, and so those are teak and star-lined with the school system. And these are educational partners. We couldn't do what we do without these. We work very closely with many of the organizations in town. Many of them are also outside of town through Corpus Christi area, Aransas Pass, Port Aransas, and down through the valley. We all participate in this really fantastic program called Children in Nature, and that whole thing is geared to, let's get kids outside, away from the TV, away from their phones. And that program is for not only wildlife organizations, but also medical professions. They write prescriptions, like the doctors down in Corpus are writing prescriptions, hey, you have two hours a day to go outside, that's your, that's your prescription. And so that, we meet a lot of people through that as well. Zoo development, we're always developing the zoo, it's an ever-ending. This year, we really hit our plumbing extremely hard. Plumbing maybe has hit us really hard. Just trying to get everything, a lot of time, it seemed like what happened is, the zoo, because of their financial situation, spent so long not fixing their stuff. They would crisis to crisis, put a Band-Aid, move forward. And within the last couple of years, there's been a lot of development, and we kind of took the year off, like, let's fix the facility, because it needs it. Done a lot of plumbing work, some electrical work, just fixing some stuff that has to happen. We still have tons more to do, but every day's a new day. Right now, the thing we're working on the hardest, the most proud of, is our lion expansion, and it doubles the enclosure size, and it's almost complete, and it's so huge, they better use it all. Other zoo development, always working on the new Macaw exhibit, concession stands moving to our caboose. We purchased, last year at this time, we had contracted the Zoo Choo train, and we actually purchased the Zoo Choo, so now it's completely ours. We're making a brand-new petting zoo. Eagle exhibit is working. The stage, we've done stage one of the stage, and we have a beautiful new 43-foot stage, and the guys are coming in supposedly today, maybe tomorrow, to finish the rest of the set design. And we're working with the University of Victoria to bring in a jaguar back to the zoo. And since that is a Texas native, it's just so exciting. Jaguars are extremely difficult to get, as we're finding every day, and we're on the list for, there's like five other people with us on the list. We're going to get it. These are our general needs, the flood mitigation plan, it's never-ending. I've met with about four engineers trying to get a good plan for the burn. We need to go up about three to four feet, just to protect us in case of a disastrous flood again. That's always the top of the list, but that funding, it's extremely difficult to, how it's, it's extremely difficult to, how do you put it aside for that when you need plumbing issues? But, you know, I'm pretty positive, so it's gonna make it happen. We always need a roof, quarantine building, restrooms, AC, storage buildings, mowers, our coolers breakings, we need a new one. But, you know, it's okay. We're gonna make it happen. These are some of our community partners. These are people that help us every day. And I probably talk to these people at least once a month for sure, if not every day. Our vet, Dr. Culberson, is so generous and so amazing. And we would not operate without him. And there's tons more, but these are just the big ones. And we were really fortunate this year. Jimmy Zaplock is our president. And he really rallied behind some of our special events. Him and the rest of the board have done an amazing job. So, our actual sponsors of the zoo have doubled within six months. And it's, I'm just so proud that we have someone who's really great and cares. And he's helping us. And they're all fantastic. But, he's the president, so, you know, he gets the credit, right? And these are some of the upcoming events. Cowboys and Coyotes, that is this September, so we're working hard on that. Color Up Run is in place. Right now, we have 800 runner walkers already signed up. And we have two months before the event starts. Color Up Run, I did not expect it to be what it was last year. We had 1,500 participants. This year, our goal's 2,000. And that organization is amazing. And we get $5 a runner. And all I have to do is promote it and find 100 volunteers. We can do that. Zoo Boo is gonna be bigger this year. Haunted Zoo is gonna be massive, so that's exciting. Native American Cultural Event, Java Perks is just a coffee event. Instead of bringing Sea Lion Splash, we're bringing in Aussie Kingdom, which is one of those international traveling touring exhibits. And they're actually gonna be with us for nine days. And so, guests will have the opportunity to go in, feed a kangaroo, learn a little bit about Australia. And it's gonna be, I'm just so excited. Just a wonderful experience for everybody. Wild About Wine in the last two years has just grown. Last, year before last, we had 350 people. This past year, we had 550 people. And it looks beautiful. And I'm just, it's amazing. Endangered Species Day, that's definitely mission aligned. And Richmond Day, that's just to teach people about how we take care of our guys. Earth Day, we partner with the City of Victoria Environmental Services and Keep Victoria Beautiful. So, I'm, I love that event. Life Science Day is a new event for us. That's just teaching basic skills that the kids learn in the classroom in an outside setting. There's gonna be about 15 different partners coming from all over the state to help with that. Our photo contest, this is the first year we did it again after it was a historical event. It was pretty good, so it's only gonna get bigger. What's just so amazing is that, you know, the newspapers in Corpus Christi area are running our events. They're putting them. I just got a call to be on the TV station up in San Antonio to promote some of our events. And it's, it's just spectacular. You know, I just can't say that enough. I'm a pretty proud person. Anyway, a couple of things that are not on the thing is, you know, what just makes us unique. And like I said, we have that traveling ocelot exhibit, which makes us number one, unique. And the primate encounter is fantastic. And then our camps, we have so many different camps that are teaks and star lined. Nobody's doing that. They do one camp and it's the same camp every week, or it's the same camp for four weeks. So, for us to have, think about it like at school, a teacher's teaching 10 different preps. And that's what's happening at our zoo. We have three people coming up with 17 different curriculums. Get close to your animals, tons of animal encounters. And one of our, that we're pretty proud of is we have almost all the venomous snakes in Texas on exhibit. And we haven't had venomous snakes in a really long time. And Mr. Michael McGaw is extremely passionate and I am too. And there we go. A rattlesnake, if you know of a rattlesnake, you better call Michael.
How many venomous snakes are there?
14?
15.
15. And we have what?
All but three.
All but three. So, it's pretty awesome. And then there's just some people in the city that are just so generous. LaRue and her crew, it's, I mean, LaRue, we're, okay, come, let me help you. And they're amazing over there. And Public Works, they save us every day. And of course, the Parks and Rec Department, because they keep us nice and beautiful. And they help anytime we need help. But, that's about it. Do y'all have any specific questions for anything?
Just a reminder, Amanda's asking for 150,000. That's the same request from last year and that was funded last year. So, there's, she's not asking for an increase in funding.
It's currently in our budget, so.
Yes, it's in your budget document.
You'll have to see these. They're so beautiful.
Look nice. Well, I would say that your enthusiasm is wonderful. I know I appreciate that greatly. And I would assume council does too. So, and I am overdue for visiting the zoo. So.
You know, I don't know how we do it because it gets, I don't understand all the rules about a meeting, but we would love to have y'all out there. And it's hot right now. Let's wait a month, but come on out.
What is the date of your Wild About Wine event?
March 20th. It's a Friday.
Okay. I've been to that.
Yeah, we're scheduled for the whole year up until next October. And I think most of it's on the website. We try to, because sometimes we have to make little changes.
Very much appreciate your comments about staff as well. Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks.
Okay, next.
Mary Helen.
Mary Helen will come visit us. Good to see you.
Hi.
I'm Mary Helen Barrett. I'm the Executive Director of the Main Street Program. And I've only been there since May. So, I was going, wow. First off, I'm gonna kind of start out with, I had put a letter in for a request. I know that we were already on there because we had a five-year contract with our hot funds. But there were two things that I wanted to bring to y'all's attention and respectfully request from y'all. Is one of them, we have the facade grant. And in that, it stated in the letter, we have budgeted $35,659 from last year that was not spent. I'm addressing that now. We want to spend that. We want to be able to carry that over. We're already working on that, on marketing the facade grant, letting businesses know what it's for. I already have two people that have put in a request with another one requested this evening, asking about it. So, it's a marketing issue, I feel. And we really want to take advantage of it and get some of these buildings, you know, the, the small things. That's one thing we'd like to request. And then the other one is, last year, we had $72,700 in our budget. As of May 31st, we'd only received $38,946. But realistically, I just got a notice too, that we did get another payment. So, it's really a little bit more than that. So, we have like a remaining approximately about $29,178 that we have not spent this year. And I would like a consideration to roll that over, to spend it, because I can spend it. And one of the reasons, and I'm sure you're wondering why it wasn't spent, I think it was a personnel issue. We have not really had a full-time assistant. I haven't had the opportunity to get a full-time, which I'm working on right now. That, that money would have been spent if we would have had somebody in place, which we want and need somebody in place to help me. So, that's what I was requesting on that.
Mary Helen, just a second, if you don't mind. There's a letter in your read file that's probably on top of your read, information that Mary Helen's referring to in her request for the carryover.
So, I kind of went fast and I knew I had it in there, except that one number stating what we have received to date is not correct based on the, the information, which I know y'all have. So, just to let y'all know, I'm on top of that too. That's kind of the money situation where we're looking at. But what I kind of want to tell you where we are headed now, I know it's only been a brief time that I've been there. And first and foremost, I have a strong passion for Main Street. I was in this 30 years ago and so excited to be back. And really excited to be with Victoria. I've lived in Victoria for 26-plus years. And I am very proud of this city. But one of the things that I've looked at is that some of the things I kind of wanted to do as we move forward, and I appreciate the support of the city, making the commitment for five years. And I will be back next year for five more, but you'll see why when I come back then. But what I have done in the brief time I've been there with the support of an awesome board, is, one of the things is we changed our logo. And I'm sorry, I did not bring a PowerPoint. I will, I'll take care of that. We changed the colors. If y'all remember, we kind of had a brown and, and green. I copied the city a little bit, but I did it so y'all can see it all the way from here. But it's more of a red, white, and blue. We've gone with that, so it gets a little bit more attention. So, that's one of the small things we've done, but we've done that. We are also working on some brochures to talk about what the Main Street is and what it does. Then, one of the huge things that we're doing right now is, you know, as we know, we deal with design, we deal with economic restructuring, and we deal with promotion in addition to organization. And one of the key components, I feel like, is we really need to start focusing on the economic restructuring. And we need to market our downtown. So, I have been working on an extensive package that has every available building downtown with pictures, with square footage, with contact information. We're gonna have that available for like a one-stop shop in the Main Street office. In addition, we'll have it for the CVB, if anybody just wants there, for the city, people that want information about downtown buildings. You'll have it all in one, one package. We're real excited about that. It's taken a lot of work, but I think it's gonna be well worth it once we have that inventory all put together. One of the things, and I just lost my train of thought, but that's okay. I'm used to that. We're tied into our website. That was the key thing. We are updating our website. So, our website will also be, when people go and see the Main Street, they'll see the available buildings. We're also putting a one sheet in there that talks about who they need to talk to, like if they're putting in a business, what type of permits, where they need to go with the city. It's a one-stop-shop form, all in one folder. So, there's no questions. And we kind of want to be that liaison between them to make it easy for them to open a business or buy a building downtown. So, it's like, if you want this downtown, this, you need to talk with the city. These are the buildings available. This is the realtor you need to talk to. I'm not a realtor. I don't pretend to be a realtor, but I can sure as heck direct them where they need to go. So, we'll have it all together. One of the key things that I have felt like is communication to the public about the program. So, we're working with the Victoria Advocate. And we're gonna have, right now, starting out a quarterly column that's gonna be about Main Street and what's going on. It'll talk about our facade grants. It'll talk about some of the programs going on. It'll talk about the businesses, that type of thing. But every quarter, you'll have some information about the Main Street program. I hope to get where it's, every month. But right now, we're doing it every quarter. There will be a article in Victoria in Motion in October on our coffee. We have that Main Street blend that they did. Looks absolutely excellent. But we are looking at marketing that a little bit more aggressively. We've changed the packaging. We changed the sizes. We're gonna get that out more into the community to market the coffee and to promote Main Street again. Like I said, we're talking about the facade grant. We really want to promote that with the businesses and incoming businesses. We're working with KVB on cleaning up downtown a little bit more. I know that we had the planners and we have contracts with all these people that have these planners. So, we're gonna go out and talk to these people and say, what we need to do to get these planners cleaned up, spruced up, and all ready for Boot Fest. So, I'm working with them. We're looking about getting some volunteers down there. We're gonna get that all taken care of. And I'm kind of touching base with each of those business owners to kind of see what their plans are with these planners and what we need to do in order to make them where they need to be. We'll also be using a new tagline that you will see. And it's gonna just be said, definitely downtown. So, really, under everything Main Street program, you'll see definitely downtown. I like that. I think it refers to a lot of things. You need to definitely be downtown. You definitely need to go downtown. Definitely downtown is the place to be. So, we're really gonna promote that. As you can see, a lot of my focus right now in a short amount of time is the marketing of downtown. And we need to get all the, all the players in place in order to market that. So, that's where I'm headed right now. Brief time.
Very good.
That's it. Do y'all have any questions, I mean, right now?
Counsel, Mr. Alvarez.
Eric, could, Mary Helen, could you introduce some of your board that's here?
Yes, yes. Well, Mr. Alvarez, which, thank you. Board President, Constance Philly Johnson.
Good evening.
Larry Clark, past president. And Helen Walker, our secretary. Jeff Wright from VPI. And did I miss anybody?
Mr. Mayfield is also an exception.
Oh, where is he? Oh, oh, yes. I drive him crazy. He really needs an applause. That's one of the things I skipped over. I touched, we're also looking at purchasing banners for downtown. I know at one point, we had them. There was a location, we had nine of them. We're looking at getting those with the same type of logo, that they'll go from Rio Grande to Church Street. So, it promotes the downtown project too, and it beautifies it at the same time.
Good. I look forward to some of this. And my office is about three blocks from yours, so come.
I know. And that's a, yes, I will. That is, that is something that I have not done, that I will tell you that I am looking forward to, is getting out to meeting each and every single business downtown.
It's too hot right now, so wait till it cools off.
Thank you. I was kind of leaning in that direction. Last time I was out taking pictures, I, I wasn't very pretty. You didn't want me to walk in here.
Yeah, I understand. I understand.
And I appreciate your support and, and what you're doing for us, because it's well worthwhile.
Thank you. And the work and your board members. Thank y'all. Okay. I want to interrupt this powwow real quick.
We'd like a consensus if, if there's a, for the carryover.
To put this in your notes, to make an amendment?
Well, we've already assumed, well, we've assumed that y'all would allow the carryover so, because you have in the past.
So, it's in the budget now to carry this?
The carryover.
Okay, that's fine. And then we make our decision at that point?
Yeah, but if y'all, if there's a consensus that you're okay with that, we'll make sure.
I'm fine with it, counsel. I mean, that was our original intention anyway, was for this program. I don't see that to change.
But did she just say that the figure was gonna change to around 29,178?
Because of the payments?
Yes.
Yeah, because she said they received the payments.
Yeah, whatever the balance is.
Okay.
US Home Rescue.
Okay.
We just need to know it's okay, that y'all are okay with that.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Okay, let's see. So, back on task on the agenda, we will move into ordinances.
That takes us to C1, which is an ordinance amending section 24-73 of the Victoria City Code relating to fees to provide for charges for lost and damaged library items, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for enforcement, publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a second and third reading, so we do not need a public hearing.
Make a motion to approve item C1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on C, and a second on C1. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passes. C2.
Item C2 is an ordinance amending sections 20-82A1, 21-41A, and 21-82C4 of the Victoria City Code, addressing the maximum number of residential driveways, rural residential setbacks, and final plat extensions, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and codification, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, so we will need a public hearing.
Move it up. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I know everyone understands this issue. This is to be more flexible for those folks.
This is in response to the variances we've been requesting.
Right, at North Crest, the variances that the residents have been asking for, this will allow them to have that second driveway without so much of a headache. So, I appreciate y'all getting this done so quick and planning and bringing it back towards us. Do we need to wait for Mr. Bucknigh's vote?
You two can decide. We have a quorum, so you can still conduct business.
Okay. Anybody want me to go get Mr. Bucknigh? I assume this item will pass. Okay, I'm gonna call for the question. All those in favor of item?
Ask some questions.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, I do understand that if you have 125, more than 125 feet greater, then you can have two driveways on the same street, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, when you said, you're all, there's three things in this amendment or this resolution. The other one was that we're moving back. Instead of having the, the 35 feet in the furnace, you're gonna allow them to have 35 feet now instead of the 50 feet away from the house. Is that what it is?
Right, right. We're shrinking, there are three different things happening, right? One is the, is the driveway issue. And then there are two others. The, for rural residential setbacks, so that's those large lots, we would decrease their front building setback from 50 feet to 35 feet. So, it increases their allowable building area on that lot.
Okay.
And then the other one is, is increasing the, the length of time that a final plat is, the approval of that is good for, from one year to two years.
Two years. So, then they have two years from the time that they are approved to finish the work that they're gonna have done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, I didn't understand the one about the 15 feet from the back. That was...
The 50 to 35?
No, 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 no. The minimum of the interior side setbacks, was that 10 feet that you can't have from one building to the edge of the, the number five, minimum interior side yard setback.
Okay, we're not changing that. The minimum interior side yard setback is when you have two lots side by side. That's the setback that each of those lots need to have between each other.
The buildings between the two?
Right.
Okay. Okay, well, that's, I understand that.
The only, the only thing we're changing is that front one, letting them build closer to the street.
Right.
From 50 feet, now they can build 35 feet. The rest of those dimensions are, are already in the code and we're not proposing to change those.
And the 43 feet, the, the two driveways have to be between each other, that was already in there?
Uh, no, ma'am. That was, that's a dimension that we came up with as part of, because before, you were only allowed one driveway, so we wouldn't have needed that dimension.
Okay. So, you have to have at least that much between the two driveways, so you can't have them both, right, close to each other?
Correct.
Most of the requests fit that requirement.
Yes, they do.
So, they will not have to go through variants. Very good. They do need to permit them, though.
Still need a permit.
Okay. And you come see you, but.
Come see us.
Have things happen fast.
Before you do the work and before you plan it.
Y'all inspect them. As long as they're good, go, right? Okay. Okay, good questions. Any further, we're on C2. It's been one of those meetings.
And we need a public hearing.
And we, okay, we do need a public hearing on C2. If anyone would like to come forward and speak about that specific item. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those... If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, item passes. Let's do C3 and 4.
That's up to you.
Let's do C3 and 4.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll go to C3.
Item C3 is an ordinance amending the 2013-2014 City of Victoria General Fund budget by transferring $1,271,936.97 to the construction fund for fiscal year 2014-15 capital improvement plan projects and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, so we will also need a public hearing.
Let's do the public hearing real quick. I got out of sync there a minute ago. We'll open the public hearing on C3, if anyone wants to come forward and speak to this item only. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Move, we adopt C3. Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Mr. Raina does not have anything, but he's available for questions?
Yes, sir.
I just want to ask one question. Is there going to be enough money in there if there's a change order?
Change order?
If there's one.
You're talking about the building construction?
Because this is going for the construction account?
Yes, they're going to have a built-in number for the building construction side, that's aside from this, yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That's correct.
Call that a contingency, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
This is just to move the money, not to talk about the actual?
Just to move the money, that's all it is.
Contract for fire station.
That's correct.
That's true, we're not voting on the contract yet.
Since, since, I'm talking, I guess, July, Self-Tax Development Corporation had a meeting, and they agreed to pick up some of the funds, and that's what we're doing, we're moving this money into the construction side of it, I mean, to the construction fund to buy the pumpber and do the YMCA pool project. In addition to that, there's 300, over $300,028, which I'd like to move to, which also relates to the construction, but it's not the construction of the building, it's like equipment, cabling and all that. Due to the timing, we don't know if we're going to have appeal ready or not, I'd like to just move to the construction fund, so the money's there already, it's being reserved just for that purpose. So I don't have to come back later to amend the budget, get amended budgets, so we move it, we're okay, and the money's reserved only for a specific purpose. That's the purpose of it.
The architect for the building is here, if you do have some questions about?
Yes.
The building, you know, if you do that now, or you can do it again when we bring the contract back for the award, so.
But we have gotten a contract already, I mean, we've got bids and?
We've done the bid process?
Right.
And we're in negotiation with the low bidder right now to bring back a contract to council, and our, we will bring the contract back September the 16th. Yes, okay.
Just bringing the big guy.
Yeah, see?
Thank you, Andrew.
But? Are we having to do any structural change, or are you still going with the same plan of the two stories and everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are. And I've asked our architect to come in, because this project did come in significantly over budget, and to kind of give an overview of how we got where we're at. So if y'all would be inclined, he'd love to come up and take about 10 minutes and discuss this with you.
Isn't that another part of our agenda? The bid?
Well, we're not warning the contract yet.
Not a warning.
We can talk about it here, we can talk about it then as well, when that comes back on the 16th?
The 16th.
Oh, okay.
The actual award of the contract will be on the 16th.
This is just to kind of give an overview of how we got to where we're at.
Because we know there was a lot of questions about why we were over budget, so.
I would like to hear from the, if you have a presentation, simply because it gives us time between now and that actual vote. I don't want to have a problem, I want everyone to be happy and have as many questions answered as possible. So we should take advantage of the fact that he's here.
Yeah, this is Mr. Ray Holiday of BRW.
So the primary, again, just to repeat, you know, we did come in over budget, and you're going to tell us about that, and what's attributed to some of that, perhaps?
Good evening, I'm Ray Holiday with BRW Architects. I guess, I thought we were a few minutes later here in item E, but we've got a little presentation here to kind of go over some of the facts and figures and kind of see if we can answer any questions that you may have. This is a copy of the presentation, so if you've got any questions, just holler and see if I can answer your concerns and how we got here where we're at. Just a little background, we were given the task of a budget of 2.1 million. Tanner made it clear that he wanted to stay under that, so we were striving for 2 million. We started designing this back in December, January of this year. The building was a little bit larger at one time, we went through and we cut some spaces, and we cut down the size of the spaces to try to get it into a budget we felt was appropriate. We had several schemes going, we had one that looked similar to Station 2 that we built several years ago, but we were, again, trying to cut down on materials and costs and move to a two-story scheme, which we have used several times. There's different philosophies and station layouts and so forth that we use as kind of a starting point, and then from there we customize them. This is, we've done a few over in South Austin area and one out in the hill country that's similar to this, that's very cost-effective, and I'll kind of explain that here in a few minutes. We did bid it in May, we were in constant contact with several of the local contractors since we have done work here. We had several of the local contractors that we were keeping in touch with, with the bid amount. We even had one from San Antonio that had built several stations for us in San Marcos area, and, you know, up until we put it out for bid, they were assuring us that 2 million was definitely doable, and one email said, "You should have no concerns." So we put it out for bid, and then the bids came in and they're higher than what we expected, and they're higher than, I know you expected. We were kind of anticipating about 2.4 million, as the economy has gotten better and inflation, and, but it rose even higher than what we anticipated. We build about 15 stations a year throughout Texas, all the way from El Paso to Sal Padre, all the way up to Denton, so we're all over Texas and have a pretty good grasp for the costs and so forth. Houston and Austin are heavily hit with the inflation right now, and we kind of thought you guys were on the outside edge of that Houston area market, but you're right in it. And so I'll show you some examples. Just in comparison, because I know that's come up before, we finished, we bid Station 4 back in September '07, it was about 2.2 and some change for about 2.8 a square foot. Station 2, we bid in December of '09, we got a good deal on that one, because we're in the midst of the recession there, and ironically, it's 2.8 and some change. So, again, similar to Station 4 in terms of cost per square foot, this one's a little bit smaller station than Station 4, this one's an eight-bedroom, Station 4 is a 10-bedroom facility. Station 6 is a 10-bedroom facility, but we squeezed the floor plan down to make it more efficient. I don't think you can find any fat in this building, we've trimmed everything several times and have any good design meetings. Fire Department was instrumental in the design of it and helped guide us, and so we've got a very functional building. The first floor is about 6,500 square feet, the second floor is about 2,800 square feet, for a total of about 9,300 square feet of building. The bids were about between 2.8 and 3.3. Gives us a cost per square foot on the low bidder of about 3.01 a square foot, which is substantial from 2009, but five years has made a difference in terms of construction costs and the activity that you have going around in your community. We asked all four contractors some thoughts on why the cost is, has increased, more so than we've even thought. The electrical costs were quite high in this project, as they are in some of our other fire stations that we've got in construction. Concrete was high, many of them indicated as well, and then just kind of the economic of the area, the Eagle Ford shale, just, we had four bidders in past bids, we've had nine, eight and nine bidders on the other two stations, and so the interest wasn't there. We had several at the pre-bid meeting that dropped out, and it's just the interest isn't there right now, and especially in the size of facility. And then just rising costs throughout the state, again, the oil and gas industry is changing things. One of the questions was, you know, why did we go with two stories? Wouldn't it be cheaper to go one? And we did this type of building back in '05, and it proved to be a cost savings for a client over in the San Marcos area. What you have in the diagram, I don't, is the gray area is kind of the attic space on the top one, this is a one-story. The red area is kind of the occupiable space, you'll see kind of a truss there, and then below it's kind of a couple of feet of area, that's where the ductwork runs and so forth. And the theory of the two-story is that we pushed the bedrooms up into the attic space, space that wouldn't be occupied. And the reason we do that is there's no exterior additional walls, the floor joists go from 2x10s to 2x12s. We do have to have interior partitions, we have to have electrical and plumbing, but the shell of the building's already there, and we're using space that is already needed because we want a pitch roof, because it sheds water, and it's low maintenance and all those good things. So that's why we pushed it into a two-story shell. And that was, again, to help save money and stretch the dollars. Lastly, we've got some stations here, just some cost per square foot and so forth that we've got going. Station 4 in Victoria is about 2.26. The Canyon Lake one, which is very similar to ours that we were proposing with dormers, it's a much larger facility. Back in '08, it was 160 a square foot. The other one that's very similar to this one is, you'll see in the middle, Burnet, City of Burnett. We actually bid that in February of last year, it was 166, it's got dormers, it's a second story, and so that's where we were kind of coming from. We were hoping for about 2.30 a square foot, 2.40 a square foot, and the costs are just not there. We've had some bids come in here, again, we do a number of stations and bid them, we've had several that bid this summer. Pearland, we're doing a station there, came in at 2.97. Spring Texas up by the Woodlands at 3.10. And then your station at 3.01, and we're doing work in Richmond and Clute down by Lake Jackson, they're also scheduled to be about 3.10 a square foot. So that's how we got here.
Counsel, do y'all have any questions about?
One thing I'd still like to see is a comparison of schedule of values from those previous two fire stations to this one.
Um, yeah, we have them. I think we pulled them up right after the bid to kind of look at them, so we can send them to Tanner and distribute. We don't have anything on Station 6, though, because the contract has not been awarded.
Is there something electronically you can share with the rest of council?
I think it'd be a good indicator, I know that each contractor's going to break it out differently on their 703 that they give to you, but during the negotiation, I don't know why we couldn't ask for their proposed schedule of values. I'd like to see it to understand where the cost difference lie.
We can request it. I, I mean, they turn in a lump sum number, so they don't break it out, so we've, well, we'll certainly request it and see what we get.
Are you, you talking about from the low bidder? The one that we're negotiating with, what his current schedule of value is, or? Okay.
A lot of times, he doesn't have contracts with his subcontractors till he has a contract, so.
I realize that, but he also knows where his numbers are going to come in, he used their numbers to build up his. He puts his bid together by division typically, and he already knows where his schedule of value should be.
Okay, we'll make the request.
Okay. Let us know. I mean, some of the numbers in looking at this page, to me, bear out, I've had recent conversations with a particular school district on the north side of Houston, he's preparing to build some elementary schools, and they're having, the things are changing so fast, they have difficulty matching revenue to the cost estimates. So, which obviously, those are larger projects, but the answer, some of the business office folks told me was, people don't want to do it, there's too many freeways and roads to be building. And it's obviously a different type of contractor that does some of that, so that didn't make a lot of sense, but it's just the demand is so high for that type of labor. That's what I was told. So these numbers bear that out, especially your spring fire station and Richmond and just throwing that out.
I don't think that there's that many projects out there, I think it's, in this area, still the labor pool being drawn to the oil field is more of an issue than there being an exorbitant amount of work out there to be done.
Skilled labor competition.
Yep.
Absolutely.
And doing some of our research, we did contact all four contractors to get their feedback, and just the interest, I think there was just one mason that turned in a bid, and they all used the same mason, so it's just, that's some of what's happening.
I mean, we see it in Lynn's department, you know, and his number of vacancies and that type of work, so, okay. Any more questions? Very good. We look forward to that information and what you can get.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being patient and waiting. All right, so where are we?
We have a motion and a second on C3.
On C3, motion and second. So any further discussion on C3? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, C3 passes. Well, do C4?
C4 is an ordinance amending sections 24-121A and B and 24-122A and B of the Victoria City Code related to fees to establish revised water and sewer rates, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for enforcement, publicification, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, so we will need a public hearing.
Let's open a public hearing. If anyone wants to speak to C4, please come forward now.
Do you have a question?
Please name an address and?
Arklovkin, 116 Wilshire.
Thank you, sir.
On the variable rates, you just added 25 cents to everybody, and that makes the smallest person's rate go up 14 percent, and the high volume goes up 8 percent. It would seem to me it ought to be a percentage down, down.
I think, let Lynn explain that, because that's not totally accurate.
And that's what I would like to get explained. I mean, maybe there's a really good reason for it, but I don't understand it.
Well, there's a, there's a weighted factor and our multiplier in there, so Lynn might want to explain that, it's not, it's just not 25 cents across the board.
So, okay, good, good question. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to it? If not, I'll close the, the?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Sorry, Lynn. And, okay, why don't, let's get a motion.
We adopt.
Okay, we have a motion and second, so now we can discuss. Mr. Short, would you like to tell us some logic behind these numbers?
Certainly. First, let me, let me say that, of course, this rate increase is being proposed to address the rising cost of operating and maintaining our water and sewer systems. What we are proposing is to increase the base rate of both the water and sewer accounts by 25 cents per month for the 3/4 meters now, and on the variable rate side, we're proposing to add 25 cents per 1,000 gallons for both water and sewer. Of course, the larger meter, even though the 3/4 base rate's going up 25 cents, the larger meters are going up, their base rate goes up higher in proportion to how much water they flow. For example, a 1-inch meter will flow 2 and 1/2 times the amount of water that a 3/4 meter will. Therefore, typically, we set our base rate at 2, for a 1-inch meter, at 2 and 1/2 times that of the 3/4 meter. In this instance, we're proposing that the increase, the 25 cents for a 3/4, would be multiplied by 2.5 to come up with the increase for the 1-inch meter, and so on, all the way up through the 10-inch meters. We would increase the rate in proportion to the amount of flow that that meter's capable of flowing. And then on the variable side, of course, you know, typically, higher meter, larger meter size, use more volume of water, and since that 25 cents is a per 1,000 gallon rate, those larger meter sizes will see a greater increase, just by virtue of they consume more water and use more sewer service. greater increase just by virtue of they consume more water and use more sewer service. We estimate that this will generate about an additional $1 million per year, and the increase on the average residential account is approximately $4.25 per month. I'll answer any other questions you might have.
So the proceeds are for... Do we have the capital?
The proceeds are for the operation and maintenance of the water and sewer system.
Okay. Did you... How many new accounts did we add recently this past year? Did you add...
Do you know, Donald?
Did I hear a number recently? Maybe...
13 something, I thought.
200 or so? I was talking to Darryl. Okay. That was...
You're talking about...
Yeah, that was waste... Solid waste.
That included extra parts.
Oh, okay.
I don't have that number. I can get it for you.
No, that's okay.
Donald says it's about 200 also.
200 accounts?
200, 120.
My only point is just the system expands and it's...
That's correct.
Additional maintenance. Okay. Counsel, we have a motion and second. Are there questions to Mr. Short... Mr. Alvarez?
And I understand what you're doing. The weighted... The multiplier on the meter size. And then on the variable side, it's just a 25 cent...
Per 1,000 gallons.
Per 1,000. And then what I had asked a while back was to study the increments.
Yes, sir.
And you had suggested maybe this year sometime, y'all would take a look at that for next year.
That's correct. We are proposing to do that. That's going to take a substantial amount of time, and we certainly will endeavor to do that and have it ready by this time next year.
Right. I would appreciate that.
Lynn, what percentage of the total usage that we have in the water meters would be like the 3/4 percent? Do we have most of them 3/4 inch, 1-inch?
Yes, ma'am. It's mostly 3/4 by a large volume. For instance, if you look at the number of meters... Water meters, for instance, we have over 20,000 3/4 meters. We have 825 1-inch, 224 inch and 1/2, and it just goes on down from there, on down to 1 10-inch. So by far, the vast majority of our accounts are 3/4 inch, and most of them are residential accounts.
What's your average for the business, you know, like a restaurant? What do they use? Is it the 1-inch?
I don't know that I have that. I don't have that.
Mr. Jalapeska knows.
Yeah.
What is it?
Both of them are 3/4.
3/4?
Oh, you're asking meter size. I'm sorry. I thought you were asking how much water.
No, no. How many... What size meter? So you would have a 3/4 also? So you said most of them were residential, so...
Yes, by far.
I would imagine restaurants would not have. I thought... I've always considered 3/4 to be residential.
Well, it'll flow 60,000, 1,000 gallons a month.
Well, I mean, y'all might have sprinkler systems and things, but anyway, I won't... I digress. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, that's fine. I just thought, you know...
A lot of commercial places that have flush valves in their restrooms require a little bit larger meter size. Put up a name.
Okay. And I had to ask you, in the future perhaps, when you give us these charts, to add the number of percent, which is what Ms. Lee's asked. It's just... It's a good information to have. It may not always be relevant to the discussion, but I appreciate that, because I was fixing to ask that same question. So the average residential user for 1821 will get their 2,000 gallon base. They tend to use about 7,000, I think the city manager told me, 6,000 or 7,000 gallons?
We're basing it on the water consumption on 10 and the sewer on 7.
Okay.
Because obviously, some of the water is going irrigation.
Seven plus... So about 9,000, 10,000 gallons per residential user, okay? So their bill, upper $20 range for an average. Okay. And my only point is, I mean, this... I think we all take any increase like this serious, and we... You only ask for what you need. Sometimes I hear people say, "Oh, just raise it $5 to get it over with." Well, that's not the point of this. We don't want to take any money more than what we need to manage this system properly and make sure it's safe and available. And I have to chuckle, I was sitting here looking at this bottled water. Now, I didn't buy this, it was... City provided it to me, but I probably this month will buy enough bottled water to exceed this water bill that I will pay at my house for 10,000 gallons, is my point. So I think it's a good value. So I appreciate what you're doing. Counsel, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of C four, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Short. We need to... I know the meeting's been long and we just finished our ordinances. We have to revisit something, and Mr. Gilbert is ready. The numbers on the hot fund item were off slightly. They have been corrected. Now, what is required? We can revisit that item. Did you already report it to your...
Sorry.
Sorry. It's okay. What we need to do is...
That's all. Everybody expects that to be wrong.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right, so if we're through picking on the reporter, Councilman Bucknight will need to rescind...
Reconsider. Make the motion to reconsider.
E four.
E four.
Okay, so you have made a motion to reconsider. Do we need to vote on the motion to reconsider? We'll need a second.
Do I need to put the...
Yes, we do need a second. Thank you.
We have a motion and second, and then we'll make a new motion.
We make a motion... No, we vote on that motion if I remember my Robert Tules correctly, and I'm sure Mr. Bucknight will correct me if I'm wrong. We vote on the motion to reconsider. That brings the item back to the table as if it had not been considered yet.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reconsider...
I told you to take off your shoes.
H four.
H four.
Excuse me, E four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. One opposition noted. So now we need a motion and a second with new numbers.
That's right.
We just voided what we did.
Everything that we've done tonight on this item is no longer done. We are back to square one. There were two amendments made to the prior amendment, and if I understand correctly, Mr. Raina is going to read the newly revised numbers that are going to incorporate both of those amendments. He's shaking his head no. Oh, he's going to let me read the numbers. You're the numbers guy.
Smart idea, Gilbert. We need to make a motion for E four first, and then we can amend it.
Yes, you do.
So, hold on, everybody. I need y'all's attention for a moment.
No, no. Mr. Bucknight's right.
I know. I know. I just wanted to make very clear what we're doing. Maybe I lost my train of thought. But this new motion that you will make will include the two amendments we made to the original motion, which we rescinded. So go for that.
Make a motion to approve item E four as presented.
Yes. We need a second on that motion. That puts it back on the table as it's presented by staff, which is what was in your packet before the amendments. And now what I'm going to do is I'm going to read a revised set of numbers that incorporate all of the changes made by both of the prior amendments. Okay? So it will be... It will include the $10,000 to Warriors Weekend. It will include the $10,000 minus a little bit to the Comic-Con, okay? And this... These numbers are intended to also include the contingency that the grant to Comic-Con is contingent upon them submitting a budget for their upcoming event that is acceptable to the legal department. And let me read through the list of numbers. Did you write... You haven't been over there, so you can double-check what I'm reading aloud? Good. Okay, so Victoria Symphony, the revised number is 38,904. Victoria Bach Festival, 43,767.
What was that number again?
43,767.
Just, Counsel, I had to ask if we could make a few copies of that for all of us, so you don't have to write it down, including the media.
Absolutely. After he's through.
Okay. So that was Bach Festival, 43,767. Leo J. Welder was 24,801, 24,801. Theater Victoria is 58,356. The Film Festival is $35,000. That's... It's written here as the Film Festival. For clarity, that is the Victoria Performing Arts Center. The Quilt Guild of Victoria, 38... Excuse me, 3,890. Victoria Ballet Theater, 38,904. Museum of the Coastal Bend, 29,178. Victoria Regional Museum Association, 49,116. Victoria Preservation Incorporated, 13,616. Victoria Fine Arts Association, 18,966. Victoria Art League, 5,836. Warriors Weekend, 10,000 flat. The Minority Business Council, 7,781. The South Texas Zoological Society, 12,158. And Victoria Comic-Con, 9,726.